Okay, Mr. Feinberg, we're just waiting for people to enter the attendees to enter the room. We're live on Facebook.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Welcome to the March 4th, 2021 Board Business and Conference Meeting of the School District of Havreford Township. Could we rise for a pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Okay. Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Pleischer?
Yeah.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Minji?
Here.
Mr. Sinto?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
The Stodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
And Mr. Feinberg.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Regal. I'll accept the motion to approve the official minutes from the February 18th, 2021 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Time moves.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is student recognition.
Mr. Feinberg, it's another exciting evening. Tonight, we have high school students who live in our township joining us. Lily Ewing, Hannah Hermanson, Lucy McCullough, Colleen McCullough, Sydney Nyhill, and Lily Walker.
Good on them.
And these students have been part of, or have actually created Beads for a Cure, right, where they have been making bracelets, they have t-shirts, keychains, all in an effort to raise funds for Children's Hospital. You might have seen them on Action News. You may have seen them in local newspapers. They were a little behind the eight ball, giving them some additional press this evening and recognizing what they have accomplished. Beads for a Cure was honored recently at Philadelphia's Liberty Ball. And next week, Hannah Hermanson is being honored by the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society as 2021 Student of the Year. And these students know much more about lymphoma, leukemia, cancer than they should know as children. So we are so very proud that they reside in our township and what they have done. So Hannah or Lily, maybe you can tell us a little bit about the work? And then some of our board members will ask you some questions, which I'm sure you will be able to field this evening.
Hi, so I'm Lily Walker, and I am one of the reasons why Beads for a Cure became a thing. I had brain cancer. I was diagnosed in March of 2019, and we're just trying to raise money to help kids with cancer. And we don't want cancer to be here anymore, and I'm hoping I can do something to change that.
Great. Great work, Lily.
Thank you.
Hannah, do you want any, anything there?
I think something with her microphone.
Yeah, yeah, so if there's a way, we can give her some technical help, I'm not sure, but maybe we'll come back to her. Questions that some of our board members might want to ask any of the students who are here with us.
Hi, I was wondering where people in the community might be able to get some of the merchandise that you create and sell and how we can support your work.
Hi, I can answer that. So right now, we do have bracelets, Tumblr cups, and t-shirts are soon coming. And we actually just restocked some of our bracelets and keychains. And as of now, we only have a Venmo way of taking donations or direct cash or checks. But we had some really exciting news come to us the other week is that we're being sponsored by the Delco Group to become an official nonprofit organization. So once that happens, we'll have an accountant, a bank account, and we'll have our own card for Beads for a Cure. So it'll be a lot easier to take donations. So that should be coming in about five months, and we're super excited.
That's great.
That's wonderful. Congratulations on that.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, hi, thank you so much for sharing this with us and for you coming tonight and telling us about it. So why beads? Like, what brought you, what made you think of creating, you know, these types of things?
So last summer, when, after, actually, right after I got diagnosed, the six of us, we did our research and we came to realize that childhood cancer is actually severely underfunded and they desperately need the funds to be raised. And we felt so helpless, but the one thing that we felt like we could do was raise money. And we all had crafts, we all had beads, we all had friendship-making bracelet kits, and we decided to turn it into something where we could share with others. So we decided to start selling them locally, and we just started, I think we raised actually over $2,000 in only a few short weeks when we first began. And we immediately donated that to the Child Life Services at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. And what the Child Life Services do is they provide therapy for any child who has to stay inpatient at CHOP. So Lily has a child life therapist, Hannah had one too. And they basically do, they can do art therapy, they could do music therapy, and it's just a really great program at CHOP. So we wanted to support something small, which actually became something a lot bigger than we thought it would. And from then, we took off. And so far, we have raised over $20,000, which we're really proud to say. Some of the money has gone to the Child Life Services, some has gone to research, while others have gone to individual families who are struggling and individual families who needed support over the holidays with financial things or just buying toys for their children. And we helped out a lot with that over this holiday season, and we're excited to do it again next season, too.
Wow, what a beautiful story. Thank you so much for sharing that and for everything you're doing for the community. Really great job, thank you.
Here, here. Any other questions from the board? Well, thank you all very much, and good luck with it.
Yes, good luck. We will share your information with the board so that they know what your Facebook page is and how they can get more information.
Thank you.
Good job, girls.
Thank you.
Just make a slight adjustment on the agenda. The next item, in honor of Black History Month, we had our Black Indigenous People of Color Parents of Havreford Township do a book drive. And my understanding is that it was very successful. So who's going to present?
I believe Dr. King is here with us, among other parents, but she has been our contact for setting up this evening. So Dr. King, if you wouldn't mind introducing your partners who are with you.
Absolutely. So first of all, thank you so much for having us here. My name is Latonya King. I'm the founder of the BIPOC Parents Group of Havreford Township. And so I have with me here Monet Riley and Brittany Borden, also parents within the township, and they are the chairs of this organization. And so we have this amazing idea to give back to our community, and we wanted to do so in honor of Black History Month. And so what started off as an idea to collect a few new books has turned into an amazing, amazing community outpour of just support. And so I wanted to allow Monet and Brittany just to give a little bit of information about the book drive and give you our final total for what has been collected. So, Monet?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Monet Riley, and I am the parent of a second and fourth grader at Manoa Elementary. We could have done a few different projects for Black History Month, so you know, why a book drive? So at our core, we believe representation matters, and our children should feel represented in their school community and their classrooms. Writer Rudy Sims Bishop introduced the framing of mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors. I know Krista mentioned it last meeting. A classroom library really has the opportunity to provide a mirror for students, a world in which they can see characters and themes that reflect their identities and experiences, such as skin color and hairstyle, family and home life structures, spoken languages, or abilities. Once students feel seen themselves, it's also critical that they be exposed to characters and stories that are different, windows into the lives, customs, and belief of others, so that when they grow up, they are able to work with all different kinds of people. And what happens to students' self-esteem when they see their lives positively reflected in the curriculum? Children delight in finding themselves in books. You know, she's from Pakistan, just like me, or he has dark skin like mine, or look, that main character uses a wheelchair like I do, or my parents are two different colors, too. Our hope for this drive is that the BIPOC children within the Havreford District have diverse mirrors to reflect on and that their peers have diverse windows to do the same. So that was the inspiration for our book drive, and now I will pass over to Brittany.
Muted.
Okay, there you go. Hi, thanks for having me. We just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you so much to all the community's support, the local officials, business principals of the school, people of the district, and the Havreford Education Foundation. So I have some totals for you, because I was in charge of collecting everything. We received $1,800 in monetary donations. We received also a mini grant from the Havreford Education Foundation of $1,500. So the BIPOC parents of Havreford Township tomorrow would like to donate a grand total of 1,270 books that represent diverse cultures. And we're so excited.
Thanks, awesome. Thank you, thank you all, thanks very much, and thanks to the foundation. I thought that's just great.
And we certainly know that those resources will be put to terrific use. Just this afternoon, in a meeting with our principals, they were all well aware, they will be at Oakmont tomorrow, they knew the exact time to be there, and they're anxious to know when the books will actually make it over to their schools. So they're excited about that. Thank you for all your work.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for being supportive and just allowing us to give back to our schools and be a resource to our community.
Thank you all for being with us this evening. Next one on our agenda is public comment. Anna, you ready for us?
Yes, I am, Mr. Feinberg. Our first comment this evening was over the three-minute limit, and unfortunately, I didn't hear back from the gentleman. So what we normally do is we condense it. So I'm going to do a summary of the first comment. So our first comment is from Fran Reagan at 348 Harbison Road in Wayne, PA. "I am writing this letter as a petition to refund the penalties and interest on my 2019 and 2020 taxes for the School District of Havreford Township. The reasons and list of events for this request are listed below, along with attached documentation." I want to note that he has every conversation recorded that he's had about his taxes, as well as every attachment in regard to these taxes, and it will be sent to the, it was sent to the board. And then, "In closing, I base this on the above information and documentation, which comes down to someone changing my mailing address without my knowledge or permission, and therefore not allowing me to pay my taxes in a timely manner. Then, when I am notified, I am haphazard, in a haphazard way, and quite by chance, the school board wants me to pay penalties and/or interest for a tax bill I never received. Then, to add insult to injury, I am the one who has to figure out what happened without any cooperation from either the school board or the county. To date, I have spent 24 man-hours on this at a time when I am not in the best of health. It amazes me how no one would even take on the responsibility to look in this matter. My analysis as to what happened is that when the county hired an outside contractor to do the reappraisals for the county and school district, that someone corrupted the database and either didn't know or didn't want to spend the time and money to correct it. This also leads me to believe that I am not the only one who has had this problem, and that other taxpayers have paid the penalties and interest unknowingly or because they ran into some, the same runaround that I did and just gave in. It makes me wonder how much money the county and school district has collected and kept that were a result of these errors. That will be a matter for another day, based on the, on the above, by petitioning the school board to refund the penalties and interest on my 2019 and 2020 taxes for the School District of Havreford Township." Our next comment is from Danielle Foster at 631 Havreford Road in Havreford, PA. "Dear Dr. Ruscia members of the school board, I am the parent of a first grader and an eighth grader, both in the hybrid model in the Havreford School District. I am writing this comment in support of the teachers in our district. Despite unprecedented circumstances and seemingly insurmountable challenges, they are succeeding in teaching my children and children across the district. This year may not look or feel like other years, but kids are learning the curriculum and learning problem-solving resilience and patience. I am as eager as anyone else for kids to return to five days in person and for our world to get back to normal. I am, however, concerned that we may be returning too quickly. We are so close to being able to vaccinate teachers, and I am puzzled to why we would not give teachers the opportunity to be vaccinated before we return to five days in person. I am a healthcare worker, and I am lucky to have been vaccinated already. I work with patients every day who are recovering from this virus. Many are young, in their 50s and 60s, many with little or no medical history, and although the people I see have survived, they will likely never be well enough to work again. Their lives have been changed forever. Our public schools require vaccinations for less deadly diseases than COVID-19 in order to be eligible to attend. We have an effective vaccine for this disease, and we are on precipitous of being able to offer it to all teachers. I am asking the board to consider waiting until this happens. Our educators have been so generous with their time, talent, and energy, and we owe this to them. Thank you for your time." The next is from Jacob Russell at 504 Maple Hill Road in Haver Town. "Dear board members, I am writing to implore you to reconsider the push to return our children to school for five days a week instruction on March 15th. COVID cases are no longer dropping in Pennsylvania." He has a URL connected. "CDC experts are now warning about a fourth surge in the U.S., and our teachers are not vaccinated. We cannot put our educators at heightened risk, and we cannot risk our children and families through the decreased distancing that is inevitable in the classrooms, lunchrooms, etc. The CDC is warning us against our relaxation of safeguards, and this move could prove very harmful to the health and wellbeing of all those in our Havreford community. Thank you." This is from Susanna Elwin at 504 Maple Hill Road in Haver Town. "Dear board members, I am writing to ask you to reconsider the return to full-class-sized normal schools starting on March 15th. Infection rates and numbers of cases are not at an acceptable level. The CDC recommends our children to continue with hybrid education. We are putting the teachers at risk as well as our students. Teachers should be fully vaccinated prior to the return to full-time. Students should not be less than six feet apart without additional safety measures in place at school. Placing students three feet apart increases the risk of transmission. The students' desks should have some sort of protective barrier, such as a plexiglass shield. The rush to forward the return to five days with a full classroom attendance is unnecessarily putting our students and teachers, as well as the community, at risk. Thank you." This is from Alexis Pasternak at 609 Woodland Drive, Haver Town, PA. "Dear school board members and Dr. Ruscia, once again, I am kindly requesting that this district please put all curriculum resources, lessons, pedagogy, K to 12, online, not skeletal information for parents and taxpayers to see. When did True TV's program titled "Adam Ruins Everything" become a seventh-grade ELA resource? Part of this episode of "The Disturbing History of the Suburbs" was shown last fall, in which one individual in the program states, "The suburbs are insufferably white." Insufferably means difficult or impossible to endure, intolerable, or unbearable. What was the message being sent, if not one of negativity and a put-down? I am hoping you can understand my concern. Please update your policy, specifically exemption from Instruction 105.2 and Controversial Issues 119. Please give parents the power to opt-out or exempt their children from controversial topics, such as the ones I have mentioned in the previous communications. Please open up the parent guardian equity team to all those who would like to participate, as that would only bolster this district's pursuit of equity, diversity, inclusion. Please post minutes to the parent guardian equity team meetings online. Please post a resolution you adopted last summer directly to the district's page and clarify for all of us what this resolution actually means. Please elaborate on the anti-racist pedagogy approach to teaching, which our teachers will be subjected to. Please provide data as to how the school district is a racist one. Finally, and most importantly, please keep politics and political agendas out of our schools. Thank you for your time." Our next one is from Bob Tarly at 700 Ardmore Road, Ardmore Avenue in Ardmore, PA. "Dear members of the school board and Dr. Ruscia, as a taxpaying parent, I write to express my concern about our school lunch menus. I and many other parents believe that these lunch menus are being used to promote controversial nutritional agendas. A prime example is the hummus platter at Chestnut Wald, which was on the lunch menu every single day in February. The fruit side seems to alternate. We do not want our taxpayer dollars to go towards a lunch menu that would result in all children being indoctrinated into vegetarianism. Students need real protein to learn their ABCs and 1-2-3s. How about a good old-fashioned Salisbury steak, or maybe some sloppy joes? We pay taxes to America, so our kids should be eating American food. Meat and potatoes washed down with a glass of whole milk, maybe pepperoni pizza on Fridays. Let's get back to basics here. We want our children to be meat-eating, God-fearing, taxpaying Americans who know how to count, spell, and add. Hummus and other controversial foods will not get us there. Also, I have done my own research on the internet, and hummus costs much more than meat. Our property taxes are high enough, very truly yours." Our next one is, "My name is Tarantina, and I live at 112 Cathmere Road. I attend a Catholic school up to 12th grade and have no children, and yet every year I have to pay the full amount of school taxes as a family with multiple children in the district, as well as parents having attended public schools. To say this is unfair is an understatement, and the whole reasoning of school property taxes is unjust, but I do not expect politicians to change anything soon. Having watched the last school board meeting where the people didn't even know how to operate Zoom properly, and then having members say, 'Everything is fine with the present state of affairs in the district,' despite letter after letter from parents saying the exact opposite. If you're going to tax people unfairly, and tell taxpayers how dedicated and essential teachers and staff are, at least open the schools as appropriate schools or are to the students, and give the taxpayers and parents at least that much. After all, if it weren't for other people going out and doing their jobs, teachers wouldn't be able to stay home at all. Are they worth any less than the teachers?" The next comment is from Christina Gandy at 124 Treaty Road in Drexel Hill, and she's submitting her comment with 109 signatures from parents. "Dear Dr. Ruscia and school board members, we are writing today in support of full-time, in-person learning for Havreford students in grades 6 to 12, who would like it. Currently, the return to in-person instruction that was outlined in Dr. Ruscia's 223 email only addresses the in-person need of elementary students in Havreford School District. The emotional, mental health and academic needs of middle and high school students remain unaddressed. Per Dr. Ruscia's email, the district does not have the space provided, to provide the recommended six feet of physical distancing during lunch at the middle and high school levels. Because of this, the district is advising that these students remain in the current hybrid schedule and have added additional in-person learning every other Friday. The addition of every other Friday adds eight in-person instruction days at the middle and high school level. This is not enough. Alarming. Increases in anxiety, depression, and suicide have been reported in children at all levels of education. It is imperative that families with children at the secondary grade level have the choice to return to the classroom full-time. Marple Newton School District has announced a phased plan to return their secondary-level students to full-time in-person schools starting 3:15. Other public school districts in Delaware County, such as Radnor School District, have already surveyed families regarding full-time, in-person learning at the secondary level. Havreford School District should be proactively surveying middle and high school families and proactively planning for the return of these students, just as it is important for our elementary students to be in school full-time for their mental health, and same applies to our secondary students. Families that are not comfortable with full-time in-person at the secondary level should continue to have the choice of remote or virtual learning. We ask that you send the district survey distributed on 2/25/21 to middle and high school student families. Additionally, we ask the district work to return middle and high school students to the building for full-time in-person learning by one, establishing a clear timeline for returning grades 6 to 12 to full-time in-person learning, reaching out to public and private school districts with full-time in-person learning to assist with problem-solving barriers presented in the physical distancing during lunchtime. Three, survey families with children in grades 6 to 8 to determine the number of students that would choose full-time in-person learning. Four, work with members of Reopen Havreford to creatively solve the unique barriers of that physical distancing during lunch presents in our middle and high school buildings." Our next comment is from Laurie Watkins at 517 Upland Road in Haver Town. "Hello, members of the board and Dr. Ruscia, I am writing to support bringing all of our students back for five days of in-person learning. I understand you were voting to bring back K to 5 at the board meeting tomorrow night, and I implore you to vote yes. I do not know how many of you have school-aged children, but I am here to tell you that hybrid and virtual learning does not work for our family. While families have a choice to keep their kids home for H O L, the parents who would like their children to attend five full days have not had that luxury. That is unfair. You can no longer hold the power to decide what is best for our children. They are not your children, they are our children. We know what's best for them. You were voted to represent us and use your voice to speak for us. Listen to us. We want our children back in school five days a week for in-person learning from grades K to 12. Many parents are wondering why the anticipated start date of March 15th has been pushed to March 22nd. That means students will be missing out on more in-person learning. This is not acceptable. Another question we have is why the administration waiting until March 18th to propose the middle and high school return to five days of in-person learning, and why is it half-day? I want my child to attend five full days of in-person learning at HMS. It's been difficult enough to have to pick up my daughter on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 12:30, when those are the only two days I am able to go to work, since my other two children are in school. How am I supposed to be able to pick her up five days a week at 12:30? Busing is not available where we live. We are hearing excuses like furniture has to be ordered, that hasn't come, logistics of spacing, etc., are the reasons for the delay. Is this true? If so, why has it not been already been taken care of? Why haven't you been planning this all along the way? It seems you should have had a plan in place, ready to go, when restrictions were lifted. You've had since March 2020. Nearly every other district, no matter what the size, has managed to figure things, figure out how to get all students' grades, grades K to 12, back to five full days of in-person learning. Why can't we? No one is claiming that it's easy as flicking a switch, but this is your job to figure it out, and it should have already been figured out by now. We, as parents, have had to figure this out all along the way. It's your turn now. Do what's right for our kids, not what's right in your opinion. My husband and I have written several letters to, probably five. We've only gotten one response from one board member. That is unacceptable. We can't help but think you're hiding behind your virtual meetings and not responding to us or the members of this community. Sincerely." Our next comment is from Maggie Watkins, a student at Lynwood Elementary School at 517 Upland Road in Haver Town. "Hello, members of the school board. I think we should go back to school, because it is what's best for all of us, teachers, parents, and students. And I know that there are many, many students, teachers, and parents who want us to go back fully five days a week. It is not fair for parents who have to work, so they are not home being able to help their kids, and some do not want their kids home alone during school. I hope you receive this email. Thank you." This is from Joe and Meredith Mercanti at 25 Dartmouth Lane in Havreford. "Good evening, school board and Dr. Ruscia. I am writing this evening to ask that you vote in favor of returning K to 5 students to the classroom full-time starting March 15th. I am an active member in the Reopen Havreford Parent Community, and we are advocating that all grade levels have the opportunity to return to school for full-time in-person learning if desired, and urge that the middle and high school students will have the opportunity to return full-time in April. The hybrid schedule was never meant to be a long-term option, but a temporary fix until guidance came out in support of reducing distancing. On February 19th, the Chester County Health Department came out with an updated guidance that relaxed the distancing recommendations from six feet to the greatest extent possible, and at not time less than three feet. This new guidance allows Havreford School District to accommodate more students in the classroom and provide full-time in-person learning for those who choose it. Over the past year, Havreford has followed the direction of the CHOP Policy Lab in regards to virtual hybrid of full-time school. On February 24th, CHOP Policy Lab published an article explaining that major news outlets over the past few weeks continue to print opinion pieces promoting fear and uncertainty around varying strains that will lead to surges in COVID cases." They then went on to state that their team is among several that correctly predicted outbreaks throughout the southwest and southeast last summer. "The early fall resurgence in the upper Midwest and warned of accelerated transmissions before Thanksgiving." The report then states that where we stand today in all the 800 counties we follow, we had a dramatic declining in cases, hospitalization, and deaths from COVID-19, and we forecast that these trends will continue as we're heading into spring. The incidence of new cases is down more than 75% since early January continues to plummet. As disease and vaccine-induced immunity increase along the... As disease and vaccine induced immunity increase along the, alongside the end of winter and the arrival of warmer weather, we anticipate that these trends will continue. Numerous studies and reports have published. Have been published outlining guidance for school leaders on how to best open schools even at the highest levels of community transmission. A report published by fifteen medical professionals titled Schools and the Path to Zero Strategies for Pandemic Resilience. In the face of high community spread advise how schools can develop a path to opening with little or no in school transmission. They go on to explain the most important elements of infection control in a school setting are universal masking, hand and bathroom hygiene. Achieving four to six air changes per hour of clean air through any combination of ventilation and filtration or outdoor, or outdoor classrooms. Three feet social distancing for young learners at all levels of community spread. Six feet of social distancing for high school when the levels of community spread rise above one hundred to one per one K, one hundred thousand case daily new cases. Robust quarantine policies and contact tracing practices and where feasible surveillance and screening testing. With the reduced distance guidance from the C C H D Child Policy Lab forecasting a dramatic decline in cases throughout the spring and the path to zero study. Outlining the three feet social distancing is adequate for young learners and the Haverford School District should be able to move forward. With the intent to bring students back into the classroom for full time learning. Thank you for your time. Uh, this is from Elizabeth and Michael Lab at fourteen forty one Vermont Road in Drexel Hill. Dr. Ruchi and members of the board, we are writing this evening to urge you to vote yes to reopen the elementary schools in Haverford School District. Quite frankly, we have been disappointed by the school district's lack of transparency and failure to act in reopening the district for all students. When the district and board could have been proactive in opening, they chose to be reactive. During this time, our daughter's friends attended their private school for five days. Of in person instruction safely. Furthermore, we have recently watched other surrounding district, surveyed parents, planned for reopening and bring their scholars back into the classroom. In our district, students who cannot learn virtually were left to suffer. Students' health and wellbeing during this time has been negatively negatively affected. Childhood B C, B C D is rising due to virtual learning. A D H D has been disproportionately diagnosed as young students cannot focus during a full day of virtual instruction. Suicide rates across the country are rising in all children, including those as young as age ten. The cost of closure on our children's education has had devastating consequences. Students who previously received passing grades are now failing. Students have figured out how to play video games and zoom simultaneously rather than learning how to solve mathematical equations or read. There will be families who are uncomfortable with reopening. They have the option like Haverford Online or the Pearson Program. Families who wish for their students to attend in person for five days a week should not be held captive to those who do not agree. It was irresponsible to the school district to provide to families. A March fifteenth start date without the ability to deliver the opening of schools on that date. Families have planned allocated resources and made commitments to their employers to return to work based on the March fifteenth date. Pushing back the date is unacceptable respectfully. This is from Catherine, Catherine Wang at sixteen ten B Road. Dear Dr. Ruchi and the school board, I write in favor of return to five full day, five day in person learning. I'm sorry, I write in favor of a return to five, to full five day in person school. Um, it has been nearly a year since our students were in school full time and the proposed date. For full reopening now has been pushed from March fifteenth to March twenty second without explanation. While students who are doing well and have a front line still have that as an available option, the hybrid option is no substitute for full in person school. And there has not been any clear or reliable explanation why students should not return on March fifteenth. It is difficult to understand while logistical considerations considered being cited have not been anticipated and addressed in the many, many months since the schools oh closed. And it concerns me to think that additional pressure from certain groups may create further obstacles and delays in reopening. I hope that this is not the case and I appreciate the board's hard work over the past year and these unprecedented circumstances. Now is the time to fully reopen the schools. Thank you. This is from Andrew and Erin Pigeon at seventeen twenty eight Hawthorne Avenue in Havertown. Dr. Ruchi and the board, I am writing this evening in full support of the return of all children in all grades to the classroom for five full, five full days of in person learning. I was hopeful we were on the path to achieve this goal when the C C H D changed their guidance on February nineteenth, the day after our last school board meeting. I know Dr. Ruchi mentioned earlier she would need two, three weeks once given the go ahead from the C C H D, which put us on track for the lower end of those expectations and a March fifteenth return date. All we're excited is assuming the school board followed with an overwhelming majority of other school boards in Delaware County and voted to make it official. Then I heard about the delay. I'm sure it's for logistical reasons which are probably completely illegitimate and disclosed tonight. Let me tell you what this delay has prompted. That this delay has opened the door for a campaign to return after spring break because it's just another three weeks. I speak for most struggling parents and kids actively not learning via Zoom when I tell you. What we hear when we have a delay after the fifteenth was all already the target date. It's just fourteen days to slow the spread. It's just another month to not overrun the hospitals. It's just a piece of cloth in your face. It's just online learning. It's just productivity in your job. It's just your business. It's just your church. It's just until we develop a vaccine. It's just until the holidays. It's just, it's only sports. It's just until we roll out the vaccine out. It's just until all the teachers are vaccinated. I fully expect to hear variants next, next, or now we can vaccinate everyone if we just can wait a couple more weeks. My point is there are always going to be reasons to delay. There will always be another goal if we can reach it if we just wait a while longer. At this point, it's unacceptable that we delay for any reason. We have suffered long enough. Haverford School District is now behind many Dalco School Districts in their return date. As I have lived this virtual learning experiment with a kindergarten, first grader and fourth grader, I felt that online learning disproportionately affected the youngest students. But now I have the evidence. I have seen the Eames web data via right to no request comparing twenty nineteen to twenty 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 one. And to say it's alarming would be an, an understatement. The percentage of kids in the red danger zone in the first grade and kindergarten in twenty 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 one versus twenty nineteen is astounding. Why was this data not presented with the rosy presentation a couple of meetings ago? Some of our elementary grade schools have six times more the amount of kids in the red zone this year than last. What is going on to, what is going to be done about this? More than thirty five percent of our, of the kids today. Of these kids are today in the dangers and have not meeting the spring standard. I see Zoom meetings with the reading specialist and there were twelve kids on it. This is supposed to be a one on one time with the specialist. These specialized classes are now the size of a cohort. These, these kids have been left behind. There is no other way to put it. And here we are talking about another delay. There are two grades this is happening in, and this is when the young minds are being formed, learning basic communication and comprehension skills. Honestly, just getting back to school isn't good enough for this group at this point. The damage has been done. What are we going to do with these kids who miss so much kindergarten and first grade? The time can't be made up. I respect that the board is volunteering and I respect that they are neighbors. Last meeting, the board president talked about a heavy lift or big sacrifice when it comes. When it has come to this last year, and I can say this inaccurate description of my fourth grader. It is an inconvenience on him and us, but we are going through a pandemic, so everyone is making sacrifices. I am sure he will be able to catch up when we return. My passion and anger is coming through on what we are doing for our littlest, little swans and what can be done to help them. Returning to school full time is a good first step that should have happened a long time ago, but I need to know what else, what else can possibly, possibly do for them. Please do not forget about them. Their frustration self doubt grows with each passing Zoom session. Thank you. Our last comment is submitted from Jenny England at one nineteen Wood Lane. Dear Superintendent and School Board Members, last school board meeting reopened Haverford submitted a petition with over three hundred signatures. Asking for the district to move forward with full time in person learning. That petition has continued to circulate and receive signatures. Today, that petition has over four hundred and fifty signatures. It is attached to this comment and was reset privately to the school board and Dr. Ruchi since it had already been rubbed, read publicly. Today, I ask the school board to vote in favor of returning our elementary children to in person school full time on three fifteen. As was the initial plan and to proactively plan for the full time return of our middle, middle and high school students. On February twenty fourth, Dr. Paul Off at a renowned and respected pediatric infectious disease doctor at Children's Hospital Philadelphia wrote. In Child Policy Labs weekly update. That the time for peering forward has come. Dr. Off had stated that while we are inundated with media images designed to promote uncertainty. CHOP's policy lab data of eight hundred plus county shows that. Quote, the incident of new cases is down more than seventy five percent since early January continues to plummet. End quote. He cautioned against making decisions that are based on speculation. While he supports moving forward in a controlled way, he does support moving forward. Child Policy Lab has demonstrated they have the tools to determine if the new variants become a concern. We are now equipped with the knowledge of how to protect each other as we move forward and we have the ability to recognize when to be concerned. End quote. The school district, school districts across Delaware County have already begun the process of moving forward. In case you were not aware, below is a list of districts whose boards have already voted for full return. In Delaware County, the following schools will be reopening mid to late March. Garnet Valley opening for four full days for all students. Interboro K to five opening five full days. Pendelco opening four full days for all students. Radnor opening five full days for all K to five students. Roast Media opening four full days for all students. Marple Newtown opening five full days for all students. Longfoot Swathmore opening five full days for K to five on three eighteen. Springfield opening four full days on three fifteen. As districts continue to reopen, I am hopeful that Haverford will follow and reopen to elementary students on three fifteen with middle and high school students to quickly follow. If there are other barriers preventing us from fully reopening for those families who choose that option, please let me know so that I can assist in removing those obstacles. Thank you in advance for your assistance in getting our children back in the classroom full time sincerely. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Larry, you're muted.
We can't hear you.
Thank you. Thanks Anna and thanks to the folks who took the time to write to us. Next item on our agenda is student reports. First up is a video from Ian Slavich from the middle school.
Anna, if you can hear the video, we.
I, I just realized I was muted. I apologize. We're going to restart from the beginning.
Good evening, everyone. I am Ian Slavich and I will be recording for the middle school tonight. We are celebrating Women's History Month this month. I am looking forward to learn more about the women who helped shape our country. I am excited, Ian, that spring sports will begin soon. I am going to be on the track team this year. Spring conferences are scheduled for March seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth. Our four teachers, our teachers will be meeting with some families. And having a presentation for all families. I would like to thank the super attendant and school board for leading us through these tough times. Have a gift, have a great night.
Thank you, Ian. Next up is Katie Bonjivani, our high school student reporter. Hi Katie.
Hi, my name is Katie Bonjivani and I'm a senior at Haverford High School. Thank you for having me tonight to talk about the wonderful things happening in Haverford. Tomorrow, many of us in the A cohort are looking forward to spending our first Friday in the high school building in almost a year. It will be exciting to have an extra day of in person instruction. Members of the B cohort can't wait to have their turn for in person Fridays next week. March first marked the end of Black History Month and students enjoyed hearing about important figures in black history. Like poet Langston Hughes and Olympian Alice Coachman from the announcements made by the members of the student equity team. Even though Black History Month has ended, Haverford students have continued their learning of black history in their classes. And student and teacher equity teams are continuing to work together to help our community be the best place it can be for all students. Yesterday was Spread the Word Inclusion Day, an amazing Haverford tradition that helps foster inclusion throughout the school community. Students participated in a schoolwide survey and the halls were filled with students wearing hashtag choose to include stickers that were given out by the Best Buddies Club. Many of us missed being able to buy delicious cupcakes to support the cause as we have been able to do in years past. But the messages of inclusion and kindness still radiated throughout the school. As many seniors continue receiving acceptance, acceptance letters from incredible schools. The Haverford class of twenty twenty one Instagram account has begun posting profiles of our seniors. It's amazing to see where so many of our classmates will be headed next year and what they hope to do with their Haverford education. Seniors are also working on applying for local scholarships and awards to the counseling department. And look forward to receiving those awards at awards night in June. Further announcements regarding upcoming senior events will be included in the weekly email from Mr. Dunnege. The Fashion Design Club is currently holding a clothing drive to benefit the Covenant House of Pennsylvania. Students can donate gently used shirts, pants, sweatshirt, shoes and more to, to those in need. Demonstrating the passion Haverford students have for giving back, especially in these challenging times. As hard as it may be to believe, we are already approaching our spring sports season. Monday will be the start of baseball, lacrosse, softball, boys volleyball, boys tennis and track and field. The winter sports season has been wrapping up with district swimming championships last weekend and the regional wrestling championships. This weekend will be the cheerleading central league championships hosted at Haverford. And boys and girls basketball will play at home in the district playoffs tentatively on Saturday afternoon. Our incredible Bachi team will face Sun Valley and Springfield at the Bachi Regional Championships also hosted at Haverford on March eighteenth. We are so proud of our Ford who represent us so well in the championships and all season, especially basketball player Carolyn Dotsey, who was named the mainline athlete of the week. We can't wait to see what the spring season has in store for our Fords. This week, students have been demonstrating their love of learning and competitive spirit in some exciting ways. The World Affairs Club participated in a virtual global economic forum yesterday through the Philadelphia World Affairs Council. Where they worked together to create proposals to address critical issues like climate change. Tomorrow morning, the high Q team will be competing against Garnet Valley and Delco Christian for the championship, which everyone is looking forward to. Next week marks a year since all of our students were in the building together, but Haverford students have worked hard and adapted to the changing times. We look forward to all that is to come and thank our administrators, teachers, district employees and school board members for all your work to keep us safe, learning and having fun. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Katie. Next up, superintendent's remarks, Dr. Ruchi.
Thanks, Mr. Feinberg. Got just a few things that I, that I will start with. Certainly people have heard a lot about the vaccinations and the governor's announcement about vaccinations, J and J vaccine. That they have identified for educators across the state of Pennsylvania. Nicole Battistelli will talk a little bit more about that in our presentation this evening. I want to thank our employees who are being very attentive to the survey. There's a very important survey that has been issued throughout the district right now. I want to thank my colleagues who are going to be spending time this weekend cross referencing all of that data. So that we can get that together in a, in a format that will enable people to receive an invitation of, you know, for that vaccine. And Haverford will have three hundred and forty six of its employees vaccinated by March twenty second. So we are very encouraged by that and most appreciative of all the work that's going, that is going into this. Read Across America was a highlight this, this past week. Many of us, whether we were reading virtually, the zooming into a classroom or able to be physically present in the classroom. I for one enjoyed my visit to Manoa Elementary in a second, second grade classroom, reading with the students. But I have to say, I probably more so enjoyed their questions and interacting with them after, after the reading. Uh, as a public service announcement, I want to let folks know. The Ed Foundation was, you know, part of another, one part of many groups within our community. Running a food collection event that was postponed from last Saturday because of the weather. That will be taking place outside of the middle school in that bus lane from nine to one on Saturday. And they will be using those donations to take care of the food banks with, within the community. So they're my opening remarks this evening. I do want to give some time to Mr. Mike Mullin, President of H T E A, the Teachers Association in our, in our community. Welcome, Mike. It's nice to see you again.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Feinberg, Dr. Ruchi, members of the board and citizens, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am Michael Mullin. I have been an English teacher at Haverford High for twenty six of my thirty four years as an educator. I'm the president of the Haverford Township Education Association, which represents the four hundred and thirty plus professional educators who serve the school district of Haverford Township. H T A is affiliated with Pennsylvania State Education Association, commonly known as P S C A. And with N E A, the National Education Association. The H T E A Executive Committee and our members have directed me to share with the board our thoughts, concerns and hopes. As the district contemplates a transition to instructional models that provide for more frequent in person instruction for more students. Before I delve into the specifics of that mandate, I hope you will briefly indulge me a moment to talk about those students. They have been a model for authentic human behavior throughout this last year. I, I can't say they're happy or content. I can't say they think they're having a great time. Or that they don't miss the infinity of experiences that they have lost during the pandemic. They have been brave. They have been brave. They have been resilient. They have helped and supported each other. They have faced this situation with a wisdom beyond their years, a wisdom that's been foisted on them. They've been joyful, which is very different from being happy. They've been creative, and they've set a standard for us to emulate. As for the adults, specifically the members of HTEA, where have we been for the last year and what have we been doing? Working. We, with lots of help and support from the board, the administrators, every district employee, we've used lots of new tools, some of them we never heard of before until last year, Zoom, Canvas, Cami, even old things like YouTube and Gmail, even the telephone, to teach our students, to support them, and to serve them and their families. Where do we want to be? We want to be in our classrooms, our offices, our studios, our gymnasiums, and our clinics with our students, engaged in teaching them, supporting them, and serving them and their families. We want to be there safely. We want our students to be there safely. And there's the rub, safely. The officers and members of HTEA have had a lot of discussions, some at higher volumes than others, about the definition of what safely means. The board has had these discussions, and I can't characterize at what volume you may have had them in executive sessions. But since you're all human, I can guess. The administration has had these discussions. Parents have had these discussions. Students have had these discussions. Who knew that 36 inches could generate such an infinity? I can't tell you that our discussions have resulted in a univocal consensus. Some of us, some of the members of HTA, want to conduct classes while virtual for the rest of the year. Some of us want to stay in hybrid at six feet for everyone until case counts and positivity fall into a lower region. Some of us are okay with in-person instruction at three feet and six feet for staff. Some of us don't care one way or the other. Some of us have been telling me that we should be in five days, in five days a week in person and should have been from the very beginning. And I'll wager that if we polled the board right now, we'd probably get a similar distribution of opinions. I'll wager that if we stood outside of the Acme in Manoa Shopping Center and asked 100 random people what they thought, the distribution would be the same. So the word of the day is ambivalence. That's not necessarily a bad thing. I'd be more worried if we were unanimous, because then discussion deliberation and good planning would end. But the members of HTEA didn't send me here to commiserate with you about ambivalence. They want me to tell you what they're thinking. So while our positions on the best instructional model and the best health and safety plan are varied, there are a few things that our members have in common, and I suspect when I share them with you that many people will nod their heads and say, "Me too." We're all a little scared. We're afraid of catching the virus and spreading it to our families. We're all pressed for time. Multitasking doesn't even begin to describe what we're doing, what we're creating, what we're monitoring, and what we're accomplishing. We want to be vaccinated. It looks as if that might happen. That's hopeful news. We're a little frustrated by the ever-changing guidance and the ever-changing charts that go with them. I think there is a chart for every day of the week by now. That's not the board's fault. I bet you feel the same way. It's hard to us to follow the science when the maps keep getting changed. It's frustrating when you show up to play baseball and you discover that the game has been changed to cricket. We all want more information. Everybody wants more information. I keep hearing the word transparency when people talk of information and communication, and I frankly don't know what that word means in this context. This situation is by nature opaque. The answer to 98% of the questions members ask me is frustratingly, "I don't know." It's impossible to see through a thick fog. You have to walk through it. I know the administration knows that frustration too, and I'll bet the board does, as well as the parents, the students, and the citizens. Some of our members are worried about taking care of their own children if the district's model doesn't match the one their kids are in. Some of our members are worried about ventilation as more people enter our buildings, especially those in buildings without climate control and those in rooms without windows. In addition to the very real and very urgent concerns our members have about their own health and that of our families, we're worried about our students. A common theme of just about every phone call and every note I get is that we're frustrated, tormented by the realization that under any model the board picks, we cannot do the 37,098 little, difficult-to-explain, sometimes nameless, subtle acts of teaching that can be the difference between student stress and student success. Those moments when we can seize an opportunity to educate our kids, to support them, and to serve them and their families. And 36 inches away, there lies the ambivalence. There lies our human consternations, and we're tormented between closing that gap between them and us and being safe. So where do we want to be? We want to be in our classrooms, our offices, our studios, our gymnasiums, and our clinics with our students, engaged in teaching them, supporting them, and serving them and their families. We want to be there safely. We want our students to be there safely. Scared? Yes. Ambivalent? Yes. Hopeful? Yes. Giving up? No. Tomorrow? I don't know. Will we be there tomorrow? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. I think we're going to have to sign you up to come to board meetings and speak regularly. Dr. Rishi, do you have more at this point in your statement?
No, I was going to blend right into, you know, from Mr. Mullen's remarks into our presentation this evening, taking a look at full-time in-person instructional model and our possible return to that. If that's okay, I'll get started with that.
Please.
So, Anna, as soon as you put up, you know the second slide. So this evening, we've outlined here what we plan to address. In as much detail as we can provide, I will remind the members of the public who may be viewing that each one of our elementary principals held an information session. That information session was recorded, so it is still accessible to parents and guardians of children who attend any one of the five elementary schools. Those sessions were held specifically because there are certain elements that are different from one building to the next. So our presentation this evening will not always delve into the specifics as things will unfold in a building. But we're going to talk more about how we've been looking at the metrics and the guideline. Hear a little bit about how the testing is going. As I said earlier, Nicole will talk about our vaccination, and then we'll get into what our preparation has been, why we're making the recommendation that we are making, and then what that recommendation will be and what our next steps are and how those next steps do encompass the secondary level. So moving on now and looking at, you know, updated metrics and guidelines, what are health professionals sharing with us? What are we learning? What have we learned from professionals as well as schools that have been providing full-time in-person learning for students, in some cases for many months? And we can see that, you know, a lot has been written about the three feet or the six feet. And back in January, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued their guidance for COVID-19 guidance for safe schools, in which they talked about physical distance between desks and following current public health guidance and placed at least three feet. So at that point in time, they're still encouraged, they were encouraging more schools to consider that. The Harvard Global Health Institute looks at schools with in-person learning that use effective mitigation strategies. And a mitigation strategy is three feet of social distancing. So using those effective mitigation strategies, schools that have been open were very unlikely to create super-spreader events. Moving on, many people know and has been referenced tonight, even within some of our public comments, CHOP Policy Lab has been a constant for us in terms of providing us with information. Their February 17th COVID-19 outlook even identifies that schools really should be focusing more on municipal rates and where there is evidence of linked transmission in schools. We have experienced two instances of linked transmission in schools since our schools opened for in-person learning back in October. We have had no instances of in-school transmission since December. What are we learning from those other districts? What's presented here for you is what was issued to the public school districts, or actually all schools, in Bucks County. Back in June, June 15th of 2020, the Department of Health in Bucks County issued guidance stating that three feet of social distancing was an acceptable mitigation strategy, and the schools, many of the schools that have been open in Bucks County have successfully done so at three feet of social distancing. As recent as February 16th, our Delaware County Air Media Unit Executive Director, Dr. Maria Edelberg, reached out to Dr. Damsker, the director of the Chester County, Bucks County Health Department, reached out to him just to follow up and see how things were going, and his quote in that conversation, "The schools in Bucks County have been successful with this guidance. That guidance has not changed." They have maintained that guidance at all times, and we see that it is effective in those schools. As we look around, and it was mentioned in some of the comments earlier, area districts return to in-person instruction. I just caution us as we look at area districts that we ensure that the dates that we are identifying or dates that have been approved by the board, as opposed to communicated as potential return dates. To the best of our knowledge, these are dates, with the exception of Rose Tree Media and Wallingford. When we got this information, Rose Tree, I do not know if they have voted yet, but this was what was going to be brought forward, a March 22nd return. Wallingford is debating whether it's going to be the 18th or April 5th. They are going to continue to watch the trend data and how that moves forward. These dates are for elementary, where they will, by the time that they would have all elementary students in school. So our March 22nd date is not that far out from our surrounding districts that are all looking at that return to in-person instruction. So, and finally, we look at our own Chester County Health Department and the guidance that they have been issuing to us. One of their key statements is that they're encouraging schools to be as creative as possible, you know, in looking at the needs of students. We have heard a lot about, our teachers will talk, speak as well, about the mental health of our students. And you will see information from Chester County, looking at, you know, weighing. If you feel that there's a risk that you're taking, then you also have to look at the risk that we are taking by not bringing students back for in-person learning or in increasing that time for instruction. We are encouraged by the vaccinations. We are encouraged by the response to the COVID testing. So earlier I mentioned that, you know, the CHOP Policy Lab encourages us to look at local data. And when you look at our local data, you can see that within Haverford Township, the numbers are a little bit different from what we are seeing across Delaware County. Now, those of you who have been following us all along since we started talking about data many, many months ago, there was a period of time where Haverford Township's numbers were consistently above Delaware County data. We are now looking at those numbers starting to come down. And what you are seeing here are the actual case counts. And these data that are presented on here were presented last week, so that's what came out on Friday from the Chester County Health Department. Week one is the most recent week, so 38 positive case counts, which meant put our incident rate down to 76.73. We know that there will be fluctuations. One of the cautions that we are brought forward to us within those Chester County Health Department guidance is that you start to have your conversations, if there are three weeks, and then you look at, you don't automatically move, it transitioned back to hybrid or to 100% virtual, but you always come back to in-school transmission. Because these data here still represent the entire township, not just our schools. So we will always come back to, what do the numbers look like for our schools? And where are we having instances of in-school transmission? Do we expect to see some numbers increase within our schools if we choose to bring students back? Yes, I think, you know, the more we bring students in, we will see some numbers increase because the way numbers are calculated, if someone is in the building, when they were considered to be contagious, then they count as a case. So having more students in, we know those numbers are going to increase, but we will always come back to, is there in-school transmission? The county data does not mirror the community or the district's data. You know, these are the documents that we look forward to receiving every Friday. You can see right in the center of the screen, the red circle identifying those numbers for Delaware County. By comparison, where Delaware County was at 115, account for the 100 incidents, our schools were much lower than that. The document over on the right presents the positivity, and you can see that over a four-week period of time, that positivity rate is decreasing with the last week with it being at 6.31%. An average, so that would be the average for the entire month of February, was down to 6.9%. Again, much better than we were looking at a previous point in time. So the Delaware County numbers are not the only factor that we will be taking a look at. We'll look at our township numbers, but then we'll also go so far as to look at our in-school transmission, which has been supported by CHOP, University of Pennsylvania, and Chester County Health Department. We are not moving away from our interactions with Chester County Health Department. Should we choose to move to five days in-person learning, they will still be providing the guidance. They will still be providing the communication, the monitoring with us in terms of, you know, how to respond to cases if or when they do occur. There have also been some questions about, you know, how do we know how our staff feel? And this evening, we were able to hear, you know, a little bit from Mr. Mullen, very eloquently put about how our staff feel, and torn. Very eloquently put about how our staff feel and torn. You know, torn for because they do so desperately wants to. If they could go back to the beginning of March, February last year, you know, how many of us would take full, take full advantage of that? We did issue a survey to our staff back on February first. I want to say though, this survey was issued not asking people if, if they wanted to come back into the classroom. I don't feel that's a fair question to ask people. That's not really a decision. Do you come to your place of employment? And we framed our survey out to the staff, trying to get at their comfort level. And how comfortable people felt with mitigation strategies that are in place. How comfortable might they feel if there were additional mitigation strategies put into place? And then identification if they, if there was really nothing that they felt at that point in time would make them feel any, any level of comfort. When this was issued, the vaccines, there was no organized effort to vaccinate. That is an extremely recent development. So we don't know how much that would have or may have influenced if we were, you know, issuing this at a, at a different time. All of the recipients did not, recipients of the survey did not respond to it. That's not new. Now, we issue surveys and we don't always have all of our recipients responding. But out of four hundred and nine of the four hundred and eighty-five professional educators. Right? So that would be all of our teaching staff. That would also like people who are employed as long-term subs in the building, guaranteed building subs in, in the building. Two hundred and two feel comfortable with the current or, or some add-ons, two hundred and seven are not com- comfortable at all. And we also surveyed our instructional assistants. Ninety-eight of the one hundred and twenty-three recipients did respond to that survey. Sixty-two were comfortable with the way things were or with some of the add-ons there. And thirty-six instructional assistants indicated that there was, they couldn't identify anything that would make them feel comfortable in the building. So what, what do we do with this? Two hundred and two, two hundred and seven, that there's, that's really not, not a big difference. What, what does this tell us? Well, what this lets us know is that there are two hundred and seven people that we need to make sure that we are accessible to. That we try to look to see what could we possibly do to help them feel comfortable coming in? And how can we help them prepare, you know, for a return of students to five days of, of in-person learning? Our intent was in issuing this was never to say this is what teachers want or this is what instructional assistants don't want, therefore we're going to, you know, make a decision whether or not to open, return to in-person instruction based solely on that particular data point. But people have asked about it, so we're sharing that information with you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Nicole Battistelli, who's going to talk with us about some of the, the testing, the vaccination, the preparation that we have been engaging in for the recommendation that we will be bringing forward to you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Rishi. The last time I presented on Project ACID, we were very much in the planning stages of this program. Project ACID is a federal program that CHOP and the DCIU and the Chester County Health Department have been organizing in our area. This provides for rapid antigen testing of staff and at some point possibly symptomatic students. We are, have started the assurance testing, weekly assurance testing of staff. We started last week and we had eighty staff, staff members tested across all of our buildings and all of our employee groups. We did have one positive staff member who was asymptomatic. This week we are in the middle of testing because we do it at a different building each, each day. So we still have a few buildings to get to this week, but around a hundred staff members will participate. So far, we have not had a positive yet this week. So this testing has been in place for now the second week. And we're hopeful that we will get more participation in the coming weeks. Thank you, Anna. Last time when I presented, I also did not have much of an update for vaccine. And so I'm happy to report that we are now, have been notified that there is a plan to vaccinate our staff members. We were notified that there are three hundred and forty-six vaccines available to our school district. We will be working with the PA Department of Health, the PA Department of Education and the DCIU to coordinate the vaccine distribution. The vaccine distribution will take place at the DCIU before March twenty-second. And a company called AMI Healthcare and the National Guard will be vaccinating our staff members. So we were very excited to get this news and I just want to thank everyone who took the time to advocate for our staff to receive this vaccine. Thank you. And here's just a list of some additional supports, equipment, materials, items we're going to have in place if we do move forward. Obviously, there's a need for increasing the hours of our custodians in the building. There will be more cleaning taking place. We are still in need of some additional lunch monitors. We do appreciate everyone who has reached out to us and interviewed and have volunteered to become lunch monitors in our elementary schools. We have ordered six hundred additional desks to replace tables in the K to two classrooms. We also have storage containers coming to store the tables for the K to two classrooms. And this is really about fitting the students in the classroom with the desks. It's much easier to fit students with desks instead of each at a table. We have ordered twenty-two hundred additional workplace shields, which are basically little plastic dividers for student desks. And we have also ordered additional face shields and masks for every building. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jen Saskas so she can speak about the return to full-time in-person learning. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. So now that we have a picture of the current data trends, we are going to turn to the recommendation to increase in-person time for students. Why do we feel like this is important to consider this newly available option? Some of the reasons are listed here, including the updated guidance and increased testing, additional PPE. All of those things make returning to more in-person time safer and a healthier option. Additionally, various organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC and CHOP, as we've spoken about earlier today, have all publicly recognized and our educators concur that more in-person time for students contributes to improved social and emotional health. While our teachers, students and their guardians have been doing a tremendous job staying focused academically, there is no question that being present in the classroom for more in-person minutes will support students' academic success. And finally, re-establishing routines and increasing the students' classroom communities will be integral to improving the school experience for all children. As with any decision, we completed a multi-step planning process in order to prepare for the return to more in-person learning time. Our administrators continue to evaluate any data and any updated guidance, all while planning logistics and prioritizing communication. First, though, we evaluated our physical spaces to determine if we would be able to fit our current students into our classrooms with at least three feet of distance between them in instructional spaces. This has been an organizational feat completed by our principals, custodians, teachers and support staff as it requires us to reconfigure classrooms, order new desks and use additional spaces in the building. Principals have also been collaborating with staff through question and answer opportunities, faculty advisory groups and constant conversations to plan the logistics of the proposed transition. Additionally, principals held meetings for parents and guardians to review the details of what the, what will change for, in the buildings and what will not upon return, returning to more in-person time. And as always, we reached out specifically to our Haverford online families so that they would have the information and know what to expect as well as how to indicate a preference to change their program if they did have one. Our hybrid families, as you'll see in a little bit, were asked to complete a preference form. And one of these final steps of the planning process is actually occurring right now as we are making this recommendation at a school board meeting. Many of our elementary parents and guardians were able to attend our principals' meetings or were able to access their videos that were sent as a follow-up. And there they learned about the items that you see here. There are a few here that I would like to emphasize though this evening. One is the appreciation that we all feel for students and families for all they've done to support teachers and schools this year. Of utmost importance is also what Nicole was just talking about, which is the call for additional lunch monitors. We're thrilled that we have had interest from some folks who applied for this position and we still need even more lunch monitors to ensure that our students can be supervised both while eating as well as in the play, on the playgrounds. Another item for emphasis is the fact that upon this return to full-time in-person instruction, we will be adhering to our attendance policy and procedures and expect the students who are signed up for the in-person model to actually be present each day. Of course, same rules apply. Please stay home if you are not feeling well. Send in absence notes as usual. A change, however, is that it will only be students who are quarantined or in isolation that will be participating via Zoom. If a student is absent for a day or on a family trip, they'll be absent from school and follow the makeup procedures just like they would in a typical school year. This will allow for greater consistency and enable our teachers to focus on planning for and instructing the students with a reliable sense of who will be in the room. The majority of what is currently in our health and safety plan actually remains the same. We do continue to mask, sanitize, and we ask, of course, our families to screen children for symptoms at home before sending them to school. For those students who are remaining in person, their teacher and their class will remain the same. Those who transition between programs will have a new teacher and a different set of classmates. The elementary school day arrival and dismissal times remain the same. But principals did share more specifics regarding the procedures at their meetings with families. There are some adjustments to car line procedures and all of that to account for a greater flow of traffic. It is also important to note that quarantine guidelines will still require that anyone within six feet of a COVID positive or presumed positive person for fifteen minutes or more during the infectious period is quarantined. This does not mean that a whole class would need to quarantine, only those that are seated within that six feet for fifteen minutes or more. In addition to logistics that are specific to the building, such as those arrival and dismissal procedures, you can see the other items that will be different include elements of what we've already discussed this evening. Of note is the addition of more Plexiglas, which we just heard about sometimes on the teacher desk and other times on the student desks. This is dependent on the configuration of the classroom as well as the number of students using it. These factors also play a role in determining how teaching and learning will look in the classroom. Teachers have been very careful to keep the appropriate social distance throughout the school year. And now we'll be planning, how do they do that with even more students in the room? They're carefully crafting seating charts so that small groups can still occur with, without a minimum of movement. And also deciding how technology might be able to help with small groups and guided reading. I just want to offer my congratulations and appreciation for our teachers and our, all of our educators who are once again finding ways to deliver sound instruction in a new circumstance and a new environment. So with all of this information, parents and guardians were asked to indicate their preference on a Google form that was due this past Monday. We had a very strong response and principals did reach out to families who did not initially respond. And then for those who did not complete the survey at all, we will keep them where they are presently. Either in their Haverford online class or in their in-person model. In an in-person model. As you can see here with this graph, the vast majority of those who are currently attending the hybrid model have selected to remain in person as we move to the full-time model. Seventy-four respondents or three point three percent have indicated a preference to shift to Haverford online. Principals will be working this week and next to determine how to accommodate those requests. They're also working to accommodate the requests of those who, who currently attend Haverford online and indicated that they prefer to shift to the in-person model. So of three hundred and fifty Haverford online respondents, sixty-seven or nineteen point one percent of those wish to switch to in-person and the rest wish to remain in Haverford online. And now I will turn it back over to Dr. Rishi for recommendations and next steps.
Thanks, Jen. To carry on with the instructional model selection preference that Jen just spoke about, I, I think it's important to note that that was not a vote. So there, you know, there could be people in the community who would be looking at that and saying, well, that was my preference because hybrid wasn't offered. As, you know, as, as the preference. And we recognize that. That was, as I said, not a vote. That was if we are looking at five days of in-person instruction. Would you like to move your child to Haverford online if there are space available? Or would you be inclined to have your child continue to come to school, you know, with, with more of those students present? So our recommendations for next steps is that we, the recommendation we're bringing forward to you tonight is that a return to a full-time in-person instruction for our elementary aged students on March twenty-second. If you refer back to, you don't need to move Anna, I'm just, if you refer back to the slide that where Nicole talked about the different things that we're looking at, six hundred desks, storage containers outside of our buildings. Many of our elementary buildings were previously set up with tables in the K to two classroom. That's, and tables are wonderful in K to two classrooms and having children sit at group, in groups and working together. The, everything has come down to square footage now as, as a result of COVID. Those tables will not allow for students to be socially distanced the way they need to be socially distanced. And for us to have the majority of students return to five days of in-person learning. So that necessitates for us getting an acquisition of, of the desks. I, I will say I did hear, you know, earlier, why weren't we, why weren't we prepared for this? This is not an indication that anyone in the district was not thinking about this or not prepared in some way. Those desks are arriving all at different times. When you try to work with manufacturers and to try and have that quantity delivered all at the same time or even within a two-week period of time. It is next to impossible. I don't, I'm not going to finger point at, you know, any of the carriers, whether it's UPS, FedEx, big trucking companies. But I think we've all seen things as simple as the US Post and how long it is taking to receive items even just in the mail. While the amount of, amount of materials that we have ordered are not all going to be in place. It's very important to us that when we make this transition for children and teachers, that it is as smooth as it can possibly be. And that teachers and parents feel that we are ready for it. And we're not ready for it if the desks are awry, have been delivered, but they're not assembled. Or if they're not, you know, everything is not placed into the, into the classrooms. So March twenty-second is the date that we are recommending for our return to five days of in-person learning at the elementary level. We will look to provide, you know, Jen talked about some of the things that teachers are already trying to do as they are instructing and doing the work that is their typical work of the day. But they will be looking at recreating some of the guided reading groups because they will, with the numbers of students that they will have in the class. Working on seating, seating charts will be very important for the contact tracing. You know, looking at who is within close proximity to students. So they're getting, they will need to time to get all of that set up in order to be well-prepared to welcome students in a joyful way when they return to school on the twenty-second. So for that reason, we would be adjusting the time on Friday, March nineteenth. It would be an asynchronous day for, for students. And that way the teachers would have time to get for their classroom preparation. And the afternoon has already been identified as parent guardian conferences as scheduled. Moving forward and, and thinking ahead, we hope to discuss with you the return to in-person learning. Moving forward and thinking ahead, we hope to discuss with you the return to in-person learning at the secondary level at the March 18th meeting. The timeline that Jen spoke about before is already underway at the middle and high school levels with the various groups and the principals interacting with them. And our proposed right now, our proposed return date would be April 6th for that group. But more to come around that at our March 18th meeting. Jen mentioned the thank you, you know, thank you to, to our parents, to our guardians, to the grandparents, to the extended family who have been working with our children for a full year now in trying to support families and support one another. Thank you to the teachers who have been, you know, managing this roller coaster. What is our instructional model going to look like and when, you know, when will it change? Will it change now? Will it change later? And their planning and preparation that goes into thinking about how they're going to provide the instruction, how they're going to have this learning environment organized so that it is conducive to be a productive learning environment for students. Think of all the times that they've had to change that all throughout the year. As Mr. Mullin mentioned, and a huge thank you to our students who have been resilient, if nothing else, and look at what we have learned from them all, you know, all throughout this year. But we continue, you know, to thank the community for their support of this uncertain time. And as I mentioned in a previous communication, we know all too well after the year that we have experienced that whatever decision is made will not be wholeheartedly embraced by everyone. That does not mean that the opinion and the feelings of someone isn't, are not valuable and are not of concern and importance to, you know, to all of us. But a decision does need to be made. We feel that we are ready. We feel that we can have everything in place for students, for our, for our teachers by that March 22nd date. And we ask people, you know, continue to advocate for the, for the vaccines. We have been told that there will be a second wave coming, the, either the last week of March or the first week of April. And that Haverford School District will have another allocation dedicated for our staff at that point in time as well. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. We'll take questions now.
Kristin?
Just really quickly, did anyone else's hand feature disappear? I'm not able to raise. Okay, maybe it's just me. Why I physically rose my hand. Um, thank you for presenting all this, for all the thoughtfulness and work that has gone into not only this presentation, but the behind-the-scenes work to get schools ready to welcome our students back. I just wanted to go back to the staff survey for a moment. I was really struck by those numbers that of the respondents, 50% don't feel comfortable returning. It's, I guess I'm worrying about, worrying about teacher morale here. We are so close to having a vaccine. And I can attest, being an employee in the school district of Philadelphia, the second I got that vaccine, I just felt a wave of relief come over me. I mean, I have an added layer of protection now if I get called to go into a school that I didn't have before. I just want to know how we're going to bridge this gap. I mean, to bring in 50% of our teachers, to have them coming from potentially a place of fear for their health, for their safety, and I know our students are incredibly important, but not at the expense and sacrifice of our teachers. So could you say more about that, please?
Certainly. So I will remind folks that that survey was issued on February 1st. You know, a few things have changed since then. The 346 vaccines that have been allocated for the school district of Haverford Township, we do have, and I hate this word, but we do have a priority order that we are to identify. This is not a first come, first served for 346 employees. We are to begin with teachers who teach K to 12, special education, instructional assistants who work in those environments as well. We believe that some of those staff members have already been vaccinated. From there, we move on to elementary and we are to begin with the kindergarten and work our way up. So there is a very systematic approach to this, to this vaccine. When the governor talked about it, he said specifically that the focus is to start with elementary because he sees this as a way to enable families to get back to work when the youngest students are back, back in school. And that is our priority order follows that. As I said, elementary teachers related in classroom support staff, beginning with our youngest students, moving there to bus drivers, you know, who are working again with our youngest students. And so it's after you have all of those teachers, if there are any more of the 346 vaccines left, that we will then continue with the order of magnitude that we have been given there. So Kristin, I can't speak for, you know, exactly how each one of those individuals will feel if they are able to get the vaccine or, you know, how many have been able to secure a vaccine since that time. That's, you know, a month now that we think, you know, some folks have. But we do realize that, that there will be some people who don't feel comfortable and we will try to work with Mike and members of the association to do what we can to help with that.
Thanks. And just a quick follow-up to that related. Do we have a sense, I'm wondering, have these surveys covered how many of our staff have already been vaccinated? And how many are willing to be vaccinated? Should it become available for them?
That is the survey that is out now and we are hopeful that those who have been vaccinated will participate in it.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Laura?
I had two questions. So one was related to vaccine. I know you're still looking for parent lunch volunteers. Are those who become lunch volunteers, are they also eligible to get the vaccine?
Unfortunately, not in this, I would not do that until I had every teacher in the, in the district vaccinated.
But eventually perhaps if there are enough.
We, we had to submit a count of employees.
Okay. And then my other question was about the Haverford online option. So I know that there was some uncertainty with parents who are trying to make the decision between in-person and Haverford online that are currently doing hybrid. If they are moved to Haverford online, are they looking at Pearson or are they looking at moving to a classroom with, you know, an online classroom with a Haverford teacher?
Do you want to take that, Jen?
Sure. Our principals are working very hard right now to find where they can integrate the people who indicated that preference into the current Haverford online classes. There may be one or two where we may have to say, are you willing to wait? We also have to find out where the two transition because we have some who want to leave hybrid and go to Haverford, and then we have some who want to leave Haverford online and go to hybrid. So you have to sort of do both at the same time. But it, that is what we are looking at right now. Of course, Pearson remains available if someone, you know, prefers that option. But, but right now it looks like we'll be able to, you know, integrate them to the greatest degree possible.
Great. Thank you so much.
Antoinette?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I just, I really want to thank you, Dr. Ruchi. I want to thank Jen and Nicole and all of the principals for going through every single detail of this process and really, you know, putting in all of the thought and effort in, you know, really this, this great way to give us this information, but also methodically. You know, I think, I think it really helps for, for the comfort level of parents, of students, knowing how much effort has gone into this. And it's really helpful as a board member, as, as a mother, you know, of an elementary school student to know how much effort has gone in. And my only question is, you know, because I think, just like, I think it was Jen that had pointed out, one of the main reasons to, to really increase in-person schooling is that social emotional health of our students, the mental health of our students. And so my question is, is there anything planned, you know, to increase guidance, to increase, you know, where, where is everyone in their mental health? You know, I would say both for students and also for staff. You know, what are we assessing mental health-wise and how can our programs be, be of assistance to those students and staff?
You want that, Jen?
Sure. Yeah. So thank you, Antoinette. First of all, it has been a tremendous effort on the part of our principals and really the folks in the buildings who have to work out all of the logistical details. And we just very much, as you have mentioned, appreciate their attention to that detail and how much they know about what their community needs and how hard they work to try and meet that. This is absolutely a primary concern. It's something we talked about at a principal's meeting today even. In one instance, you know, one way of looking at it is how do we use what we are doing currently to welcome students back into an environment where not all of them will feel, you know, as comfortable as their neighbor might feel? And how do we use responsive classroom and morning meeting to help bolster that? How do we make, you really, you need to have another, like, these are our classroom norms conversation and this is us getting to know each other in this environment focus. And so that is something, we have a lead teacher who has been trained in responsive classroom and serves as a trainer and she will be continuing to provide resources, but specifically on sort of restarting that piece. Our guidance counselors continue to meet weekly and are, are aware of the increased needs where those, where those increases are. We do see that more at the secondary level right now and in particular buildings at the elementary level. So they, one, one of the reasons that we are delivering our guidance lessons in the manner that we do with the frequency that we do is to preserve time for our guidance counselors, our school counselors, excuse me, to actually have groups and to meet with individuals and to reach out to families. We had an option of employing their time differently and we wanted to preserve that for them. So we continue to monitor that. And I will, although I don't want to speak for Greg, there, there, our HR department has been putting out in conjunction with our healthcare providers, some mental health and, and social and emotional wellness webinars and activities for staff to engage in as well as we do have an EAP program, which continues to be publicized throughout the school year to ensure that, that staff know what's available to them. And they also are always invited to work with our, our school counselors and, and share with any of the, our social workers and the other mental health professionals that are working within our buildings.
Great. Yeah, thank you so much. I think I'm not surprised that everything has been thought of and discussed at length. You know, I'm, it's really, I think the district is very lucky to have all of you really putting in, in this planning process. And so thank you so much. I would just, just finish off with, I attended the principals' meetings of my, of my daughter's school and I really, really would encourage everyone who is nervous or uncomfortable to attend those meetings and just, you know, watch the recordings of them because they really are so granular. There was an example of, I know that this cohort of this classroom is going to have to eat lunch in the class. And, and I mean, it was really, it was really impressive how much planning went into it. And so, absolutely, Jen, I totally understand how much is going on, especially at the specific building level. So, so again, just thank you so much.
Thanks, Antoinette. Bridgette?
Hi. Thank you again so much for all of the information and the thoughtfulness touching on the different aspects of this decision that are concerns and priorities for the district as well as for everybody in our school community. I know one of the things that came up tonight was in some of the public comments and in some of the topics was a need to perhaps kind of make up some academic ground for academic time that was lost this year. I think the presentation of the decisions about more time in school also focused on like those very many and broad roles that the district provides in, you know, there's certainly the academic element, but there's the wellness, the community building, the safety and belonging and, and all of that. But I, I'm wondering if you could maybe speak to and help people kind of, kind of understand, kind of set some expectations for what more time in school will look like, what some of the, the goals are for the rest of this academic year and kind of maybe even thinking more broadly, since now we've had two school years that were significantly interrupted with COVID closures, kind of what's the kind of academic plan to help kids kind of fill in some gaps and, and get to the academic benchmarks?
I'll start with that and then I'm sure Jen will, Jen will jump in at a, you know, at a very surface level. What, what the day will look like will largely be part, in part due to what school should be. You know, five full days, the, the kids are coming back, they'll, they're going to have their, their schedule that is somewhat familiar to them. So in terms of that logistic, it should look very, you know, very similar. Now, how will the culture, the climate, you know, how will all of that feel in, in the building is going to take a little bit of time and it's probably one of the things that our teachers are most concerned about. You know, keeping the distance that they need to keep from students. That's not how teachers teach. And particularly when they're working with, you know, the youngest of learners. And I would imagine that, you know, that that will create a certain amount of anxiousness, you know, in, in the, in the classroom. Looking at how lunch is going to be a little different, when, you know, when students are out, but the students have, for, for us compared to some of the other, other districts, our students know what a full day is like. And now it's going to be a full day with more, more children around them. And I'll let, you know, Jen talk about the academics and she works with the reading specialists and the coaches and some of the conversations that they've been having.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ruchi, and thank you for raising that question. We have been, as you know, carefully looking at the data that are available to us in order to determine how do we address whatever gaps may occur. And sometimes that gap is not meeting a benchmark and sometimes that gap is not performing as expected or as, as typically would be performed. And a couple of things that have occurred really immediately after looking at our, our winter data is really trying to hone in on how can we shore up some things when it comes to reading for our youngest students. We, this week and some of next week have had a, what we're calling, it's a foundations coach, which sounds probably like a little bit more athletic than it is. Foundations is our K to two, early foundations of literacy program that we use for all students in K to two. And a coach has been in to work with all grades. She's been able to come in and model lessons and to give us some pointers and some advice on how we might be able to make some sort of really fast wins and tighten up anything that we could be doing for the remainder of the year to support students. So that's, that's something, and I have to say, she has, has found a lot of really positive things that are already occurring, but then some like really easy, fast, like put the letters up over here instead of over here, kind of easy things. Hey, you haven't been doing the marking up. Let's do the marking up. You know, she's been able to help us with that. And so she'll continue her building visits into next week. And that's really focusing, as I said, on the youngest learners with the most foundational skills, which is important. Another thing that we are doing is we are convening a task force to look at how do we use what's currently already an intervention and enrichment period that every grade has in every school at the elementary level? What could that look like next year? What additional resources will we need for students? How can we divide the students to better target what their needs are? We have some additional, they're called diagnostic assessments, which will help us really hone in on like, what is the issue the child is having, which might be able to be solved with some faster reinforcement rather than sort of globally trying to just practice something again. Similarly, we've been, we've met with psychologists within the last three or four weeks to, to look through how could we be using ZERN as what we call an intervention for math? So ZERN, you've heard Dr. Nesbit present before. It's additional practice, but it includes also additional instruction that happens that's really personalized to how a student is understanding what they're trying to do. It's an adaptive program. And so we are looking at how do we use those reports to really target some more intervention for students when it comes to math as well. So we, we, I, I do have to say, I, I try to reassure people. I try and share that this is not only my perspective. my perspective, um but the perspective of many educators that um we are, of course, aware of and concerned about students who are not performing, who are struggling, whose performance comes with a great struggle that we are not even seeing. Uh, we are aware that all of that is true. And at the same time, we don't want anyone to um feel that they are behind or that it is, you know, their job to get extra tutoring to catch up. You know, that that is what school is about. We have trained professionals who meet with our students, who are working very hard. We have systems that we are continuing to bolster to uh really support students and in their learning. And um we will continue to work on that and we continue to prioritize, you know, the most foundational, the most important skills to move from one grade to the next and um and to do that with the expertise of our teachers and of course, with the amazing efforts of our students and their incredible support systems that they have at home.
Thanks, Jen. Any other questions from the board at this time? Kristin?
Yeah, um, Jen, so related to um, I guess, helping students get academically back on track and the complications around that, given our circumstances. What, can you talk a little bit more about what small group instruction, what intervention time guided reading, what that's gonna look like in a socially distanced classroom, um knowing that, yes, we're three feet between students, but we're still six to three feet between um teachers and support staff?
Yeah, sure. It's kind of hard to get a picture, right? And in every um classroom, it will look a little differently. I can tell you that um our teachers have been practicing this way. Their their rooms will now have more children in them, but it will be the same concept. Um, one of the the ideas um that has worked for teachers is the uh strategic uh seating charts. So um, you know, I personally was in a first grade classroom a a couple of weeks ago where to meet with one group, the teacher stood in the doorway and she was able to have those students turn to her and the remaining students were working individually. And then she moved to the front of the classroom and she worked with the students who were there. And then uh I was uh in another classroom where they they happened to have an alcove that is not used in the same way and they were able to pull the students sort of back a little bit. And I mean, the teacher took the time to say, you know, so and so, can you move your chair over a little bit more? Okay, a little bit more now. Uh, okay, almost there. All right. And making sure that the students were spaced as they were spaced. Um, some teachers have tried, although this is more challenging, using uh Zoom like this. You just have to really be on the muting and unmuting, otherwise you get the feedback. So uh, listen, I do not want to say that it is ideal and I don't want to say it's easy. I I will just say that teachers are making efforts to really make sure that they still have that time with students uh so that they can target the instruction during that time.
Thanks, Jen. Any other questions from the board at this time? Okay.
Very sorry, I keep having so many questions. This one is for um Dr. Ruchi, Miss um Bettistelli. So just knowing the whole pandemic coordinator um role that you've taken on this year in addition to your regular duties um for Miss Bettistelli, I'm just, I'm wondering um Dr. Ruchi, if there will be additional supports for contact tracing or contact um notification, I think we started calling it based on CCHD and just what that role is gonna look like now that we're gonna have more students in the building, more teachers in the building, potentially more contact tracing?
Uh, so the the short answer, I, if you're questioning, is there more supports? Uh, not any new supports being brought on, um but perhaps a looking, you know, at, look at what Nicole has been doing all year long, you know, looking at repurposing different resources, different human resources and asking people to assume different responsibilities. And unfortunately, there have been some things that we put on a back burner um as well. Uh, most unfortunate for Nicole is a lot of what happens in her office cannot be put onto a, onto a back burner. But she, you know, she and her staff and Nicole now meets weekly with the nurses, maybe even more than weekly, Nicole. But uh I I'm aware of a weekly meeting that she has with all of the district nurses just to go over COVID protocols, um get updates on on what's happening um in the buildings. And she's always mindful of even down to when they were scheduling the assurance testing, scheduling it in the buildings at a time uh when both the nurse and medical building assistant are present. Uh, because, you know, it's not just one nurse, there are, you know, there are our medical building assistants that are there as well. Uh, she has been very creative about the way that she is, you know, utilizing resources. However, um, we're not, you know, we're not going to take advantage of her creativity and her willingness to always jump in and do, you know, what what can be done. So part of my job is to, you know, monitor this whole team um in in terms of who has responsibility for what and make sure that no one person uh is at risk of being burnt out um because of that work.
Thank you. And Nicole, thank you so much for all the work you've been doing and, you know, leading throughout these months, many months now in hybrid.
Thank you.
Okay, last chance for questions from the board on this. Well, thank you, everybody. Thanks, Dr. Ruchi. Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Nicole. Appreciate all all the work that's gone into this. Next item on our agenda, second reading of policy, uh two eighteen point three, discipline of students convicted slash educated of sexual assault. Mr. Parker, this sounds like your bailiwick.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Uh, so this is the second read of the policy that you announced and I should place myself on the screen, right? This is the second read of the policy, two eighteen point three. Uh, we have, uh, after the first read, we have made uh the adjustments that were recommended uh by the liaisons and the uh and the full board. And uh, uh, it's pretty straightforward. Um, we haven't really made any substantive changes. We're looking to move this along, uh, take any additional questions or comments and then uh bring that back for your approval at a subsequent meeting. Uh, I'll just remind you, this is the, this is a uh a policy that was required by new legislation that was passed by uh in Pennsylvania in November of two thousand twenty, so not that long ago. Came upon us quickly and adds a new school code provision, thirteen eighteen point one. So happy to take any further comments or questions.
Questions from the board?
Greg, just a little teeny thing here. I'm noticing that page four, um, the way the pagination happened, it's blank. Um, I guess we can just make sure that that's taken out. Simple formatting.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, could you just say that again, Kristin?
Sure, um, so the the version I'm looking at of this document, at least, um, there's a fourth page that is completely blank. Um, there's not even content supposed to be there. It's just an extra page. Um, so if that's on your copy, if we can just make sure that that's out.
Yeah, I will, I will take a close look at that. I have a, the version that I have that I thought I printed from the board agenda was, shows three of three pages. Uh, so I'll make sure that that formatting uh is checked uh before we bring that for your uh approval of the subsequent meeting.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, board liaison report. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the only liaison meeting was policy, is that correct?
There was definitely a policy, so.
Anything bad?
So I'll give my report. Um, a policy liaison meeting was held on Monday, February twenty second, twenty twenty one. Um, in attendance was Dr. Ruchi, Mr. Parker, Ms. Wedeman, Ms. Larson, Mr. Sinto and myself. Um, the policy liaisons right now are working on a new, would would be a new policy for the board. It's numbered eight twenty-four by PSBA and it's titled Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries. Um, it regulates the inappropriate conduct between adults and students. And um this is the, you obviously didn't see this policy tonight. Um, this discussion of this policy is ongoing and the liaisons are taking a close look at it since it has a lot of real world implications. Um, and it would be a brand new policy for the district, so um we're probably gonna keep discussing it for a bit. The policy liaisons also discussed the current procedure that we have in place for public comment. Uh, when the pandemic started, we were told that it would last a few weeks or maybe months at most. Uh, the board then pivoted public comment to be emails sent by the public to the district and read out loud by Anna. Now that we're approximately one year into our Zoom meetings and um eventually going back in person, the policy liaisons discussed returning back to our normal public comment procedure as laid out in our policy. Public discussion is intended to be a forum for the public to make comments directly to the board and district administration. Now that we are more technologically capable of facilitating public comment in the way that it is meant to be, we recommend returning to this form of public comment where a resident of the township informs the district that they have a public comment and the person making the comment attends the meeting and is able to actually deliver their comment in person or right now over Zoom. This will provide the public with the ability to read their own comments and their own voice and come face to face with the board and district administration. Uh, the liaisons also discussed reviewing the current policy for public comment to determine if uh any formal changes are warranted and we would likely discuss that at a future policy liaison um meeting. Um, so we thus have a recommendation to the board to return to our normal procedures for public comment, which would be technologically facilitated over Zoom for now um while we hold virtual meetings. This recommendation, uh, we don't believe requires a formal board action because it's not actually a change to a policy, um but it is a return to our previous procedure. So we did want to seek board approval of this change.
Thanks, Antoinette. So do we just, is that a consensus approval or?
Uh, I I'll leave that to board leadership.
Um, it sounds like, you know, we don't, we don't actually legally.
No, right. It's not a policy change.
It was a procedural change when it was made, as, you know, as Antoinette described, we just, we changed the procedure as a result of the of the Zoom meetings. Uh, we know that we've got the capability to do what um Antoinette and the policy liaisons have described. We know it's, you know, happening elsewhere. Anna said absolutely, it can can be managed that way. Um, so it's more of a return to, you know, people providing their their public comment um just through the technology.
That would be great. And I think the board is in a, in agreement on this. Then why don't we pull the switch for the next board meeting? Does that work?
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? So public comment, somebody would join the meeting, give their comment, and then they would go back to the non-participant section, just the like viewer, is that right? Okay, so they're not sitting here through, just to be sure. Thanks.
Okay.
How will this be communicated to the public in terms of the change?
We will, oh, sorry. For something like this, we will issue that, I mean, we'll certainly change the information that's on the website and so and such tomorrow, but we'll also um issue that out in a message, community wide. You know, that we'll be beginning that for the next meeting and here are the instructions to do that.
And if for any reason there are folks who still would like to submit their comments via email and have them read by Anna, that's also would continue to be an option?
I don't think so.
We discussed that not being an option, but we, um, because we we do want to go get back to what our policy says and what is really what the purpose of public comment is. But that said, uh, the board certainly receives all of your emails. And so, you know, for anyone, just like if if you wouldn't be able to come to a a public meeting uh when we were previously in person and when we return to being in person, um, you know, at some point in the future, um, you, anyone with a comment can email the board and the board will receive their email and we read our emails.
And it won't be read publicly.
Right, that that is, that is what the policy liaisons discussed as for the change, that it would not be read, the email would not be read publicly.
Everybody good with that? Okay, well, thank you.
If we say that for the week of the eighteenth, if there is anything that, like, if a, if something comes in tomorrow, if something, you know, if if there are things that when we get to people, there's a problem with it, we might have a little bit of crossover on the eighteenth, if necessary. Uh, I don't, you know, unless you want us to say absolutely not, that's the only way.
So are we going hybrid or?
Eighteenth, full person after spring break.
I think that makes sense. Um, just to make sure that that folks understand what's happening and give everyone a chance of being heard, to have the one transition week, if that's okay with everyone else. And then after that, if um if folks can't come to the meeting or otherwise don't want to come to the meeting, they can always just email us privately.
And that would allow us at the meeting on the eighteenth, in the public session portion of that agenda to describe the new protocols going forward.
I just want to thank the policy liaison to make sure that the public is aware that uh policy, setting policy is one of the major uh legal tasks of 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 an elected school board. And um it's often not the most exciting part, uh, but uh really appreciate the good work that our policy liaisons uh have done for us all year. Anything else on policy? Thank you. Next item on our agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve disbursements from the general fund totaling eight hundred forty thousand two hundred four dollars and seventy-two cents.
In second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to approve a a consulting agreement with Environmental Control Systems, Inc. Relative to the asbestos removal in the Cooper Town Elementary School at a cost not to exceed forty-six thousand three hundred dollars. Moved in second. Can we get a little update on on the, on this project?
Yes, um, Environmental Controls, who also did asbestos removal over it or is contracted to see the uh asbestos removal with the old Linwood before it gets demoed is a very reputable firm. And JR had talked to them and asked them to come over to Cooper Town to examine the tiles over there. And they both agreed that the tire, tiles were encapsulated in about twenty years' worth of um floor wax, so that they weren't a danger to to anyone, but they really needed to be removed and replaced. And uh they've been moder- monitoring it over the last two years. And we decided, because we have this capital plan that we're doing out of the fund balance, additional fund balance that we have, uh, it was a good time to do it this summer. So we're just asking them to approve it. They'll do the scope of work, they'll do the uh bid process and they'll administer the, they'll be the construction managers on the project. And then they also do the air monitoring for the next couple of years to make sure that when the work is done, that the air quality is acceptable after that. So it's all uh one big package and um and they, they're very reputable. They do it at most of the school districts in the area.
Great, thanks, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the resignation as listed.
Larson moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Can I just say Nora O'Brien uh is a parent of a wonderful member of our community and she worked with us for at Linwood and now at the middle school. She was a supporter of children and teachers. She supported everything we did with great energy and I just want to thank her for that. We'll miss her. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the appointments as listed.
Moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the school district of Haverford Township and the Professional Support Personnel Association, PSBA, providing for temporary extra hours and authorizing payment to assigned part-time custodians providing for temporary extra hours and authorizing payment to assigned part-time custodians due to the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Chris, move. Larson, second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Can we give the public a little bit more information about this?
Right, so this is to allow the district to assign additional hours to part-time employees, part-time custodial employees who are not members of the bargaining unit due to their limited hours. And for a temporary period of time from now until the end of the school year, of course, given the changes that we are anticipating, we would need some additional cleaning capability during the school day. And it's, so it's not a matter of just having full-timers work overtime because we need it during a specific time during the day. And this memorandum of agreement is between the district and the bargaining unit to allow those part-timers to do those full-time hours temporarily without becoming members of the bargaining unit.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to recognize the following temporary professional employee who has fulfilled the three-year probationary period required by law and having received satisfactory ratings during this period has met eligibility to receive a professional employee contract effective March fourth, twenty twenty one.
Larson, second.
Second, any discussion?
Congratulations to Ms. Gerber.
Yeah, I was gonna congratulate her. I think my daughters have had her each of the last three years, so they've been a part of her professional milestone here.
That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the following leave requests as listed.
Madras moved.
First in second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept it. I'll accept the motion to approve the service contract for services provided to a district student as listed.
Larson moved. Larson, second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the recommendation of special counsel and authorize the resolution of the pending special education administrative proceeding and authorize the administration to implement the terms of the resolution as listed below. Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the high school swim team, approximately six students to attend the District One Swimming Championship on Friday, February, Friday, February twenty sixth and Saturday, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, at the Graham Aquatic Center, YMCA, York, PA.
Moved.
Second, pleasure.
Moved in second, discussion?
I just want to say how happy I was to see this because I think everyone remembers that I love these. Very excited to see an excursion.
And I think I saw on the Haverford Athletic Twitter account this weekend that our swimmers did pretty well. I think there's a new school record in a, in one of the relay teams and some other personal bests, so congrats to those who represented the board.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Larry, you skipped on item eight, the BIPOC donation.
Did that, we moved that to the top of the agenda.
We have to accept it though.
Donation, sorry, thank you. I'll accept the motion to accept a donation of approximately one thousand books from BIPOC parents of Haverford Township in honor of Black History Month.
Chris, move. Larson, second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Just to say, an immense and staggering effort. Has, has anyone in the history of Haverford Township donated a thousand books? This is phenomenal, can't thank them enough, as well as yeah, as well as the people who donated.
It's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the revisions to align the district health and safety plan with the February nineteenth, twenty twenty one Chester County Health Department guidance.
Larson moved.
For seconds.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve a revision to the instructional time template to change the elementary schedule to five full days of in-person instruction.
Madras moved.
Short second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
And just for clarity, to point out that these two actions are what the board needs to do to approve the district recommendation to return elementary school to the five full days in person as presented earlier in the meeting. Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries and thank the administration and everybody for, for their hard work of putting these plans together.
Here, here.
Board reports. Ari?
No, no report, thank you.
Antoinette?
Thanks, really quickly, I just want to say thank you again to everyone for all of the hard work that's been going into this year. And I know that it's more than anyone bargained for when they got into education. So, so really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much from everyone, from Dr. Ruchi and everyone in her administration, all the way down to teachers and staff and all of the additional lunch helpers and everyone, so thank you.
Dave?
Just wanted to echo what Antoinette said and I'll add to that also, thank you to the parents who have put up with this for, for, for the past year. It hasn't, hasn't been easy for anybody, but we're sending them back, so. Pop your bottles, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Kristen?
Yeah, I'm just gonna echo, you know, praise for district administration as well and thank you for all the behind the scenes work. You know, it's, you're doing so much that no one else is seeing, but it's so important to helping us get our students back into school. So thank you for that. And also thank you to the BIPOC parents group. I mean, just, it's just so amazing that these, these books that reflect a diversity of experiences, cultures, languages, race and ethnicities will be in our school libraries. From my own experience teaching, you know, English learners and students of color, I, I could have those books in my classroom and it kind of felt like a subversive thing. It's like, oh, you know, you can't find these books in the school library, but they're here in my room. And, you know, students love that opportunity to see themselves, but just the message it sends to students of color and the entire school community to have just more diversity reflected in our books in the school library is just so exciting. And I really can't thank them enough for their work and also the Ed Foundation for also supporting what they're doing to help our students. So thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. Laura?
Yeah, so in addition to just a big thanks, but everybody has already said such a heavy lift and I'm really excited that these kids are gonna be back in school five days a week. So thrilled about the vaccine news. Feels like a light at the end of the tunnel. It's a very long year. I don't know about all of you, but every single day I go to bed and I'm like, oh my God, I just can't do this another day. And then I wake up and do it another day and I've been doing that for a year and I know we all have. So, oh my gosh, such good news. I also wanted to thank Sandy Connolly for being really creative in Read Across America. And I wasn't able to participate live or in person, but I was really glad to have the opportunity to read a book and record it. And I did an ebook actually, so I screen shared it from my iPad that I borrowed from the library. And it's been viewed like over a hundred times, so I feel like a local celebrity, Ada Twist scientist, in case it's a favorite of ours. But yeah, I was just really excited to see that, you know, there was such a wide range of books and you know, so many members of our, our Haverford Township community read books virtually or recorded and like, I'm just so glad that that, it's just such a fun thing for the kids. So I'm glad that she could find such a creative way and that so many people could still be involved, even though these are weird times. So please pass along my thanks for letting us be involved virtually. So anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Sal?
No report.
Thanks, Sal. Susan?
I just wanted to say, I heard a lot of sentences begin tonight with, and the principals will, and the principal said, and the principals are going to. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to my friends, the elementary, middle school and high school principal. And congratulate them so far on really a job well done and let them know that when they're up all night, I think of them. I don't stay up all night, but I think about them anyway. Good luck to everyone and thank you to everyone. Tomorrow is the IU's high Q tournament and Haverford again is a finalist. So it's virtual, I'm, I'm gonna be able to watch it on Zoom. If anybody else would like to, just go into the DCIU webpage and you can go in and watch our kids in the academic contest, pretty exciting stuff. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Susan. And they've done pretty well with that over the years.
One year we won the world, didn't we? Didn't we, Dr. Ruchi? I think we won the world, every, I mean, I'm sure it was just the country, but in my heart, it was the world.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Bridgette?
Thanks, thanks for the presentation tonight about returning to school. So I think this is an opportune time to remind the public that this is still no time to let our guard down to please keep with the masking and the hand washing and the distancing. Those mitigating factors both in the community and the hours outside of school, as well as all of the things you heard the district is doing and putting in place for safety in our buildings. Those will be the things that allow us to continue to have as many kids in school as possible, as many days as we can be there, so please keep up with that. I also was able to participate in the Read Across America Day and it was fun to dust off a couple of my favorite read aloud books and yes, kudos to Sandy Connolly for putting together a resource that I hope students will be able to enjoy, not just, you know, on the day this week, but, you know, in their classroom, virtual libraries for the rest of the year or maybe longer. I also wanted to report on a couple of things. One is, you know, just some of the feedback that I get from the different meetings of board directors that I've had over the last couple of weeks. Districts are certainly grappling with the same things, you know, same issues of how to get more kids in school and what that looks like and what, you know, what the data and the guidance and the mitigating practices are. There is a wide range of where districts are right now. You know, it's easy to point to cases that bolster the argument that you're making, but know that across Pennsylvania, there is a really wide range of what school looks like and how districts are able to best meet the needs of their students. And I certainly believe that every district is doing the absolute best they can. It takes different forms, there's different resources, different facilities, different enrollment numbers, different challenges. But all districts are really working to give the best educational opportunity this year, whether it's getting to five full days, whether it's getting kids in for one day a week, whether it's opening playgrounds for the first time of the year. These are the, you know, the kind of things that districts are grappling with. And it, it is reassuring to see how thoughtful and well-planned our district's approach is and you know, wish, with such good luck as we make yet another transition in our academic model this year. And then the final thing I wanted to, to bring up, since nobody had yet, was that the board did do a, a self-assessment kind of retreat, the one-night guided by PSBA, the School Board Association, to do a facilitated discussion of good board effective principles in board leadership and management and helping us understand some of our strengths and weaknesses, things that we can work on. And we got some resources to follow up. And I think there's also a lot of interest among the board to continue both that professional development and kind of more opportunities to work together to, to build some skills and, and just a rapport and, and to help us work more cohesively as a group for furthering the district's goals.
Thanks, Bridgette. I want to thank the board for taking the time last Thursday on a, an off night to go through that exercise and much appreciated. I know it's another, you know, another few hours away from your, your families. And it's, we don't take it for granted. And Bridgette, I just want to continue to thank you for the time that, that you've been putting in every week on these statewide Zoom calls and the Saturdays at the, with the IU group and it'll all make, our district will benefit from the, the time that you're putting in. The board met in executive session prior to the public meeting tonight to review special education due process matters as well as personnel matters and collective bargaining negotiations. Our next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on March eighteenth, twenty twenty one. Same Zoom time, same Zoom place. And with that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Madras moved.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thanks, good night.